And just talk about when we're going to be talking about what? Because we've got a number of amendments here that we're looking at. So maybe we just talk about the schedule for a few minutes.
Sure.
Tonight, I guess, we're discussing HSPD. Is that it? Or is there something else that we're going to be looking at as well?
No. So at the package, for anyone that's in the audience, there's another handout that's on that table. There's the HSPD, there is the site disturbance, and then there's three definitions that I had also worked on. And that's the last page of, and also you already see it.
Okay. So that's, so we're going to be, we'll get as far as we can, is that the idea?
Yes. I think this is basically a workshop discussion. The first two, the HSPD and the site disturbance, those are advertised for October 16th. The next scheduled planning board meeting where we could schedule additional, an additional public hearing to handle any of the other items. The soonest case to be able to advertise that would be for November 5th. Last, we actually had a meeting the week prior. I have one scheduled for the 16th, and the next one is November 5th. So technically, we could actually schedule another meeting the last week of October if the board felt compelled that it needed to.
Okay. When is the warrant published?
Let me check the...
Because we've got to make recommendations of what's your wife on.
Right.
That of the warrant or publication. So that's going to be a big camper.
Hey, Joe, just a point clarification. You were saying the 16th. Is that accidental? It's Tuesday, the 16th.
So the 15th is the state election.
Oh, right, yeah. All right. So it has been...
And Monday is on its day.
Yeah, yeah.
So the only available day was...
The 16th. Okay, great, thank you.
And I will not be here on the 16th.
I wasn't going to be here on the 15th, but I will be here on the 15th.
You're a rote, right? All right.
That's good, actually, because I think, don't we have to have four?
Yes. Yeah. Well, I mean, we actually need three. We don't have any special current items.
So what is the HSPD?
I, it took a while to connect the events, so I'm bringing up them.
So we're meeting on the 16th instead of the 15th, then?
Right.
But we are meeting next week, October 1st, correct?
Right.
Okay. But not October 8th, and then October 16th, and then we have two open weeks, is that correct? Or we are going to have a meeting on the 20th?
We're not scheduled to.
Okay.
So we, we're not scheduled for one on the 22nd or the 29th. November 5th ends up being the first Tuesday of the month again. So it's really a question as far as if the board feels we need another workshop, we can schedule something. The warrant needs to be adopted at the selectmen's meeting on either the 21st or 22nd, the date of the meeting to be determined.
Okay. So the 15th would work.
Our, huh? Our 16th.
The 16th.
I'm sorry, the 16th would work.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So the, the question that was sort of at hand was holding the hearing in advance of when the board's selectmen closed the warrant.
Right.
We're able to have our hearing after that. I think one of the important things is to have sort of a vetting of these items before the 22nd, so we can vote to submit it on the warrant. We could, there could be petitions articles that are out there, that then we have to hold a subsequent hearing, so...
No, no, but the substance has to be ready.
Yeah.
For the selectmen on the 21st or 22nd.
Right. And that's, and that's where, you know, if we all say that, you know, we need additional time after the 16th, we have one more week to try to fit something in.
Okay.
Can you say, we do a meeting on the 8th?
So remember, we have, no, October 1st, and then the 16th.
Right, 1st and 16th, but not the 29th so far. If they add, maybe you can add one on the 29th.
We could add it on the 29th.
Right.
We could add it on the 22nd.
Okay.
What happened with the neighborhood protection district?
Um, Joel...
Because that's not in the package right now.
Right. So Joel is going to speak about it, and we could easily bring that forward as far as a submission.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we decided to. So just a question for us really, how many things do we want to submit to town meeting? We have, one is a pretty healthy chunk that we don't know.
Well, yeah, that one was actually suggested to me by a couple of town residents.
Yeah.
So I think we need to give that consideration. Maybe we should start with that. Joel?
Yes.
Did you have a chance to take a look at that, the Wellesley bylaw, the neighborhood preservation bylaw?
Yes.
How do you think that might fit in with Weston's bylaw? It sort of goes along with what we were talking about last summer with the zoning board of appeals, you know? Oh, oh, chief.
I have to be here, and I'll put the slide down, so...
Okay. But does it, is it something that might fit with our zoning regulations? We just, we saw the Wellesley statute, but that's a whole different bylaw, you know?
Right. So the first point is, it would be separate from your zoning bylaw. Towns that adopt them, adopt them, a general...
General bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. So that would mean the selectmen would have to propose it?
Uh, no. I mean, anybody could...
Could be a citizen's petition.
It would be, I mean, it, of course, has to get on the warrant. You know, there's a process for getting on the warrant.
Yeah.
But anybody could propose it.
Okay.
And either petition to get it on the warrant, or customs, and maybe sometimes the selectmen take, you know, warrant recommendations from boards. But anyway, it would, just on the warrant, even though in court, it would be a general bylaw, not a town law.
So could the, so could the planning board actually propose it?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, so in terms of, let me talk a little bit about what it is and the process. There's the process of simply getting the bylaw on the books, but that doesn't actually create any neighborhood preservation districts. In other words, talk about it, neighborhood conservation districts is how they're generally known. So a neighborhood conservation district is somewhat like a historic preservation district, but they're meant to be a lesser form of review, if you will. Less onerous, in some instances, depending on the nature of the alterations proposed. It's actually just a consultation. It's not even a formal change. When you're in a historic preservation district, and if you want to change the windows that are visible from the street, you need a certificate of appropriance from the historic, historic district commission that's been created for that district. For a neighborhood conservation district, depending on how you write it, but the way they're generally written, and Wellesley's is one example. Cambridge's had them longest and actually has something around the city. And I'll tell you about Lincoln's experience, which is a, is plenty of a partial experience. So there are different models for it, but under a neighborhood conservation district, you define different gradations. And so some can be approved, and here it depends on the level of staff support, but some can be approved at the staff level. Some come into the, and so here again, a neighborhood conservation district commission is created, which includes residents who live in the designated neighborhood. And so some level reviews are simply advisory. So somebody comes in for a discussion with the board, and then they're educated, if you will, if that's what's needed, or advised or informed about what the prevailing designs, if you will, or the culture of the neighborhood, and then they perform what they want. They've had that, that interaction with the board, and the idea being to try to get some respect for the neighborhood context is architecture, or the story is being... And then even in the neighborhood conservation district, a major alteration then does go through a typical approval process with the conservation district, that neighborhood's district commission. So the distinctions then are, as I said at the outset, with a full-on district commission, pretty much everything goes through, obviously, the historic district commissions make distinctions between one and another type of application. For them, they all require formal approvals, whereas here, there's intended to be gradations, as I said, levels of review that are intended. In many instances, just to make sure that property owners are aware of the neighborhood context that they're in, in terms of history, design, materials, and so forth. So the process then, so you asked about drafting a bylaw, so anybody could do it. So yes, the planning board could do it, and could recommend, request that it be placed on a warrant. So let me give you the Lincoln example, because it's an interesting first step. So in Lincoln, the concern had to do, and this was just, I'm going to say four, five years ago. The concern was with the loss of mid-century modernist houses. And so one neighborhood that had seen the loss of a couple and had quite a few of them, went around and talked to their neighbors. By the way, in Wellesley, and this is typical, the number would vary, but in Wellesley, in order to get a neighborhood designated, their bylaw says that 80% of the property owners have to agree to have their neighborhood designated. And so that's a common provision as well, the numbers, as I said, compared. So in Lincoln, there was a lot of enthusiasm for the idea, but then when the discussions got going with the immediate neighborhood, so the movers behind us were from this one neighborhood, and they couldn't reach that consensus. And it wasn't so much they were even looking for 80%, but they were looking for a strong consensus. But they didn't want it to be divisive, and they just had a sense that there were enough holdouts, that they didn't want it actually designate a district. So what's, what happened in Lincoln was that the bylaw was brought to town meeting coming this past. By the way, as a general bylaw, it's only a simple majority, it's not a two-thirds, you know, for zoning. So it was voted at town meeting, but there is no neighborhood in Lincoln that's identified as a neighborhood conservation district. So they've got the bylaw on the books, and at some point, it'll be up to that, whether it's that neighborhood or another one, to go back and restart a conversation in the neighborhood and see if there's enough of a consensus at that point, actually. What their percentage is in the bylaw for providing, if you will.
You mentioned Cambridge, that they've had a couple of developments.
Cambridge has, I would say about five.
They've been a little bit more successful in actually designated neighborhoods, as opposed to just doing a general bylaw, ready for a neighborhood to fit in?
Right. Right. And Cambridge always had about the same number, about a half dozen historic districts. And there were some neighborhoods that were seeing a lot of alterations that enough people in the neighborhood felt weren't sympathetic to the neighborhood context. So they weren't historic neighborhoods, if you will, but they were neighborhoods of predominantly 19th century, and people coming and doing things that the neighborhood, if you allow the neighbors, didn't think was fitting. So there are several, but some, like Avon Hill, which moved that neighborhood, which could qualify as a historic district. And others, like Mid-Cambridge, which is something, you know, hodgepodge, between Harvard and Porter Squares, or North SF, but still predominantly wooden brick, 19th century buildings. And I gather it's got a reason to why, in terms of controversy.
And how do these commissions, first of all, how do they get, if the bylaw passes and a neighborhood votes itself to be a neighborhood conservation district? I guess it's, it's, how's that work? If the neighborhood comes to some town body, like the selectmen, and says, we have this group of houses, and 80 or 90 of our all percent, or all of us, want this neighborhood to be a conservation district. Is that what happens, and you petition the selectmen?
Right. So that, actually, it's a good question. So let's say, let's take the Lincoln example, where it was done as a two-step, if you will, and so far, only step ones occurred. So step two would be another amendment to that bylaw. So it's sort of, there, it's like an analog to the zoning bylaw. You've got a zoning bylaw in place, and you want to map an area, or remap an area, rezone an area, you need an amendment to the zoning bylaw. So here would be an amendment to the neighborhood conservation district bylaw, actually designate a district, or if you had one, to add a second district.
Like a scenic road. You go back to town meeting, it was designated scenic road.
Right. Exactly. Just add to the list.
Okay. And then, let's assume that passes, that's a, that's a majority passage.
Right.
How, how does the, how, in your experience, how does the commission get formed?
Well, so the bylaw would define, so sometimes, typically, there are, and I can't remember, I should have gone back and looked. If it's majority neighborhood residents, or majority town hall people, if you will. So usually, you have a hybrid of people from the historical commission in the town, and then residents in the neighborhood. The idea behind the conservation districts is that it's a peer group review. And so I think the idea is that the majority be neighbors, if you will, rather than people who don't...
Is there a type of divestment problem here, or...
Well, I, well, I suppose if it's the house next to yours, you definitely, I suppose, I know, if the house next to yours are one, you know, in the butter to the butter, and you should not participate if you're a member of the commission. But otherwise, you know, the neighborhood is largely defined. The idea is that it is an affinity group with a common interest, which is to preserve the character of our neighborhood. So it makes sense that all of us from the neighborhood are, some of us from the neighborhood are...
Cool. So, I mean, it'd be a good way for, you know, to get out on the table, make things transparent, what is in the planning process. Is there any, but is there any kind of really heat? If, like, someone wants to do something, and people say, no, we don't, you know, I mean, the neighborhood doesn't like it, is there any real authority there, or is it just advisory?
Well, so that would depend on the scale of the alteration. So there is, the bylaws all have, and again, the definitions are different, but pretty much the same. Anything we would all recognize as a major renovation, a demolition, a significant demolition, a very large addition, anything that the bylaw defines as major, would have a binding review. And if you proceeded without, and let's say you went for the binding, but you didn't get it, and then you proceeded nonetheless, then the town continuing enforcement action...
So the commission would operate in the same fashion as a planning board, for instance?
Right. But as I said, the idea is, the way their bylaws are typically written, it is that the vast majority of the, well, it's hard to say, but, but that, the idea is that a large percentage of the alterations in the neighborhood would either go through a staff level review, whether it's the town plan of the building inspector, or whoever, or, let's say, the town higher preservation plan, or it might be either that level review, or the advisory non-binding board review. And again, so as to the non-binding review, you might get clear feedback from all members of the board, and go, I can do exactly what you intended to do in the first place, which is not at all what the board was advising, but that's the role of advisory. But I want to comment on the part at the beginning of your question, which I didn't mention. The district's coming to being through a historical, planning slash historical study process, just the way historic district commissions are created around the state. It begins with someone having done, someone or somebody having done a study of the neighborhood, and what it is that's distinctive about the neighborhood, whether it's, in the case of Lincoln, 20th century modern, or in the case of the 18th century neighborhood, whatever it might be, that, that study be the basis for creating the district. And I should mention that, so this whole neighborhood conservation district approach was somebody's invention, whereas the historic district commission approach at some point was somebody's invention, but today, it's statutory. It's in the general laws, and if you want to create a historic district, you have to follow the statutory process, and that also requires the study. So the, the study component that's written into these neighborhood conservation district bylaws is obviously imported from the state law, that requires that there's a study as well. In the case of the state law, historic district commissions, the study is sent to the Massachusetts Historical Commission, or at least their review is advisory only, it's not a binding review that they provide any credit.
In the case of local historic districts, the way it works is that, at least the way it worked in Weston, was that every, every household in the, in the neighborhood that was eventually designated a local district, petitioned the selectmen to form a committee. So it was bottom-up. And after seven years of petitioning the selectmen, the selectman family limited and formed a committee, and that resulted in a report to the Mass Historical, and Mass Historical accepted it and designated the neighborhood. In this case, this, the analogy is that somewhere along the line, there has to be a study. Is it, is it typically top-down, or is it bottom-up?
Well, it could be, it could be either. I, I think particularly given the neighborhood consensus required, if you will, in these bylaws, I don't think they'd work unless it's, unless it's, it's got to come from the neighborhood.
Somehow, the neighborhood would have to come, and then a report would have to be produced that ratified the neighborhood's feeling about itself.
Right.
And who typically does the report?
Well, in Lincoln, I'm quite certain it was done by the residents. They did their own research, did their own homework. It was a relatively small district, but it really depends on the community. Cambridge's got a historical commission, a bunch of staff people, volunteers, and so forth, and, so I don't know if there are any smaller communities like Lincoln, of that large, that have neighborhood conservation districts. It's either staff, or it's a volunteer, so it's...
Okay. And where, who, who does the report go to?
So the report go, well, that's a good question, actually. You know, I don't know the answer to that. I would assume it would go to the community's historical commission, so Mass Historical is not a law, unless you want to wipe them in, whether it's not like the state law, which requires, what do you call it, Mass Historical. So I assume it would go to the historical commission, for initial review. It must vary from one to the other, I might be wrong. But I think in the case of neighborhood conservation districts, the chief arbiter is the neighborhood. If the neighborhood doesn't want it, it doesn't have it. I mean, how you define the neighborhood is a question of what percentage you peg it at, whether you put it at 50% or 70% or even, as I said, I know this process is too much.
It sounds as though these are more or less standalone.
Yes.
Okay. So you don't, it doesn't have to dovetail into anything else in the, in the bylaws? There's, there's not a, you know, a detailed issue of referencing the correct paragraphs and provisions in the bylaws? Just there it is? And so we could, we could actually just produce language and see if, if it was any support for it?
Right. I mean, I do think, given, as I said, sort of the ethic of the, sort of cultures, maybe the culture of these districts, you'd want to, particularly if you had a neighborhood or two involved, to have some conversations. Or you could just take the approach, even in Lincoln, where they simply put the bylaw on the books and didn't try to map any single neighborhood, just talking on themselves, either a single neighborhood, same neighborhood. If you have a neighborhood that aligns, you're going to need some meetings.
Well, I just, as I said, I've actually, over the years, I've been approached by people who have wanted some level of input, but not the kind of input that you would get from a local historical district. So this is sort of, you know, it's, it's sort of hits that target, because it says, we value certain things in our neighborhood, and we, we want to advise people what those are, and I think that's, this, personally, I think there's some, some benefit in that.
Well, it sounds like the people you can talk to would be the people to start talking to the neighbors. I mean, I think that's how it works best, is to be organic in that sense, that it come from a neighbor, rather than from the Chinese, plenty more, or the else in town hall.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's probably true.
Do you have some examples of neighborhoods that you'd like to see?
I can't, just, I, I just, from years ago, when we had a big change going through, very discreet movement, which is Cherry Brook.
Cherry Brook.
And I think just about everybody on that road turned up, and they felt very proud of us. So that would be my number one group, they were very cohesive, and they were all on the same page. I'm not sure it would have made, that the outcome would have been any different. That's the only thing, is I'm not sure the outcome would have been any different, and I'm kind of hesitant to add another layer of complexity into what is already considered quite an honest process.
Right. Well, maybe we could do this. I mean, we don't, we could consider it, we don't have to put it on the, on the warrant, but it would, maybe it'd be helpful to, I mean, is, is it, is it a fairly, is the enabling statute a fairly compact piece of writing? Or is it, you know, page after page after page?
Well, there is no enabling statute, it's a whole rule.
Well, the equivalent of enable, the, the bylaw that would set up the possibility of designation.
Will be, well, that is the bylaw. So in other words, there really is, you think of the zoning bylaw, you've got the zoning bylaw, and you've got the map, that's one sheet. So the bylaw itself is the bylaw. And what I'm doing here, it's right here, it's not super long, by the way, I was just looking, that study report does, in Wellesley, it goes to the historical commission. So this is, was the, that's a page number, it's only like eight pages.
Okay. It's not a paragraph.
It's not this. It's not a paragraph, and it's not, I'd say it's about seven or eight pages.
Just as a general bylaw?
For the bylaw.
Just setting it up? I mean, this isn't...
No, this is the whole thing. I mean, this sets it up, but it also has the regulatory language in it, and then, as I said, all that...
Because they already have a neighborhood that they're using it on, Wellesley's, every time?
Well, they designated a neighborhood.
Okay. So they already have one. We don't have any, would they just sort of...
No, but I assume, actually, I don't know the history of Wellesley, but I'm guessing it happened at the same time. Lincoln was the exception, in that Lincoln passed the bylaw without designating a neighborhood. Typically, communities, whether it's this, or local historic district bylaws, they adopt the bylaw, and at the same time, they identify and designate a district, they map the district, as part of the town meeting vote.
because this neighborhood, it seems to be that's a common way that it happens. The neighborhood wants to do something because they see a bunch of mega mansions popping up amongst their houses and they suddenly realize that this is a real potential threat. And so they then find out, what they need to find out, and then this, what I call, an enabling piece of legislation executive, you say. And the answer to what you were saying, this is my opinion, I'm not aware. The bylaw is not really very normal, but it's like a template. It says, you know, here's this idea. And so those of you who have this problem, the Denton Road people, they don't say it that way, obviously. This is what you need to do if you want to go ahead. So it's a way of setting down an example. And it has a great virtue, I think, of not only showing you how to protect yourself if your part of the neighborhood is concerned, but also to the people who don't like the activism, too much activism, too much rules. The other thing you said earlier, which is yet another level of complexity and so forth. You know, it's not so scary. But what I think is kind of cool or interesting about it is it's not, I mean, yes, they use the historic commission because they're set up, they already exist, and they do this kind of stuff. But it's not, it's my impression distinctly that it is not necessarily, or even especially for historic things. We have historic districts here in this town. We didn't need a special bylaw for it. But the people in the Denton Road, who are the reasons why they had to create the enabling and then their individual bylaws, so you've got that example if you want to look at it. Their concern was that their, the cohesion of their neighborhood, you might say the similarity of the houses, I'm not even sure how important that was. But it was the contrast of the new, huge places that were just creating a very negative aura, if you like, with regard to the existing houses. I mean, I describe it that way because I don't like to tie it to historical only, but rather to a character. And they make a point in the article. That may be part of the reason it's a little longer. It doesn't have to be historic. You don't have to have Victorian houses. And they don't have to be the same or of a common era. They just have to have a quality and character that enough of the neighbors feel is worth preserving in some, to some degree. I thought it was really interesting. It was brought to my attention by a friend of mine in Wellesley who was kind of concerned about her neighborhood. I always assumed in naive K that nobody could ever tear those houses down because they were big, maybe three to four thousand square foot colonials, three-story high, and the lots are tiny. Well, stupid me. You can fit the grossest things in a small lot if you want to. So that was the background.
On the other hand, I can't see that if people are bound and determined to put up a really, really large house and neighborhood getting together saying, gee, we really don't like that. I don't think it would dissuade too many.
But that's why you have to read this because there's clearly a, to me, it's like a planning board type of function and action. There is some level of authority. I understand the character of Lincoln is such that people will stop when there's not consensus and not proceed at all. And we, fortunately, are not afraid to go on when we see that there's something that already fixed. We're not always completely successful, as I've seen so many times, at planning board hearings. But I wouldn't-
Wouldn't just discount this.
Discount. And it would be worthwhile to find out what happened in Denton Road.
I sort of pick up on something, though, that Joel said. I think this would stand a much better chance of gaining acceptance because if there were a neighborhood-
Of course.
-that actually proposed it, as opposed to coming down from the planning board, which is seen as the arch regulator of all time.
I thought regulated everything, not just arch.
Thanks, Susan.
I'm a little eerie about that because I just think, you know, people would listen to a neighborhood that was concerned more than they would us, even if we said, look, there's no actual neighborhood attached to this. They'd still say, well, then there must be a trick in there somewhere.
Very suspicious behavior in the planning boards, huh?
For change.
So, I don't know.
Well, you're not going to do it for this year anyway.
Well, I don't know. We were thinking about, we're talking about it, you know, but it sort of sounds like it's something that needs to mature more rather than just get thrown out there.
I have a technical question. You said earlier that scenic road has to pass town meeting? Every scenic road that's added has to pass town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we had a sort of proto baby thing like this. The planning board says, hey, you know, here's a road over here which maybe ought to be a scenic road, for whatever reason. And then they go to the neighborhood and notify the neighborhood and say, we're going to have a discussion about this.
Different scenic road, different bylaw. I'm pardon about the one that covers stone walls and trees and lights away. That has to, if you add-
Right, no, no, but I meant the approach is so much like the idea here. It just happens to be coming from the planning board because no one else thought of it.
Well, it's out there now.
Pardon?
It's out there now. I mean, so hopefully, a lot of people, I've learned a lot of people actually look at this. A lot of people in town that need to get something better to do, but they spend a lot of time looking at local access television. And maybe, you know, there's a neighborhood out there that would be interested in looking into it.
Well, if you had the eight-dollar cable level, that's the room.
All right, so we'll think about that one, but I think probably that's a spring thing. HSPD, this is essentially the language that, this is, is in fact the language that we had last spring, early last spring, the long version as opposed to the shorter one that we came up with later. And just to repeat my position on this, I iterated this at the last planning board meeting. I want everybody to be comfortable with this bylaw and understand it and know how it works. I want to give it a chance for everybody to look at it, ask questions, make comments, contributions. I don't want the sense that this is getting rammed through or that we're pushing it unduly. So that said, if we can accomplish this by fall town meeting, great. If we need more, if we need more time for people to get comfortable with it, we'll take more time. We'll take as much time as it needs to have it happen. Or not. So I just wanted to put that up there upfront, that we're not on any kind of breakneck timetable to get this in at fall town meeting, at least not in my opinion. Do my other board members share that feeling?
We haven't, I haven't talked about this. I better check with the selectmen. Well, they may have, I mean, this is a remediation, right? So we have the bylaw first so that the potential considered use of JSDL can proceed rather than having bylaw shenanigans, you know, obstruct the ability of the town to consider the JSDL.
If people feel comfortable with it. If we don't have a lot of problems with it or questions that need to be addressed or modifications that need to be made as a result of input from people.
I thought this was pretty heavily vetted before the last town meeting. Never got a chance to be heard in the town meeting. So who knows? But I'm just kind of surprised. I didn't expect there to be a great amount of hesitation, unless you've heard that there's a lot of objection to this.
I haven't heard anything.
I thought we went through this last year and Joel was there, he went through this whole thing.
Yeah, I know, I know. This is seven months later. I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable, Susan. Okay? I, you know, if they're comfortable, it's fine with me.
It was this week's town prior, did you see?
This week.
This week.
I didn't see that.
You guys go out and see?
What do you mean this week?
Last Thursday, the last Thursday. The current town.
Did you read that article?
I'm sure I did, but-
Well, it's about what's going on in the board's selectmen right now. They're just still in, they're feeling their way along.
Okay, but this is a permissive bylaw. Okay? That allows other people to do things. It doesn't require or back or anything else. But on the other hand, you can't go on with, what am I trying to say? The commercial, you know, the reason for this bylaw. But it's permissive. It doesn't require anything.
I know that, and you know that.
He gets it.
But here's somebody that-
Right.
Has a question.
Susan, I think permissive is the right word. It's enabling, isn't it? That's the idea.
Well, permissive by which I mean not restrictive.
Okay. Look, it was, it's trying to do several things. First of all, it's trying to open up the possibilities for uses in those two buildings. So they're not, it's not just limited to what's in a standard business district. That's number one. And so it's actually broadening the uses. But it's not broadening the uses to include gas stations. You know, there's a limit to the uses. And people may think that that limit is fine or not. We haven't heard any blowback on the uses, so I assume that that list of uses people agree with. So you identify those and then you identify a process. And the process is, if it's a big project and you have, you know, a lot of cars and a lot of occupants and people coming and going, you need to present a concept plan before it's designated as a historic preservation development district. If it's a small project with low impact, then you don't have to go through the concept plan. You just go straight to, you get designated at town meeting and you go straight to planning board review. So it's either big with two, with the two-step process or small or one-step process. That's it.
And I'm just kind of questioning, suppose after all of this is done, let's say this gets passed, and then the board's selectmen, three years, four years down, like, does it make it that long? Who knows? We don't have a great reputation as a town for, you know, being accepting of any kind of, you know, uses for those buildings. And it's something that none of us have ever thought of. It just is so outside.
Add it.
And then we go back and we add again?
And just add that use.
Okay.
If people want to-
I'm just envisioning this as being, you know, have any of us, have any of us talked to the board's selectmen? I mean, has anybody been in contact with us saying, here's where we are now and our thinking, here's where we are?
I think the wrong question is, have any of the selectmen talked to us?
Yeah, yeah.
The answer is?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, we had this, the reason that we all went down a bit of a flame last time was because it was at the last minute this all came forth. And then under great hurried duress, we put this thing together. It's good, and it was voted in.
It wasn't voting.
Well, it wasn't, it was certainly not acceptable because they blocked the whole provision. Okay, this wasn't, but there was a lot of resistance.
I mean, repeatedly in the selectmen, Coleman looks the camera and he says, "Read my lips," essentially. The town did not vote on any of this. It was a skirmish. And the whole thing was, you know, deep sixed.
But I'm not sure that even-
I think the bylaw itself was rejected because of the bylaw.
Right.
I think it was a gambit.
Right.
I think that's why it was-
So I don't know if I want to be, do we want to be put in that? I don't know. So I would really like to hear a little bit from the board's selectmen.
Well, we have a joint meeting coming up.
October 10th.
October 10th, right.
Historic as well.
But then we've got until the 16th. Is that what Ron has said to give it on the warrant, if need be?
No. Our hearing on the article is scheduled for the 16th. So the 10th, we're able to sort of raise up this issue because, you know, there was a memo that a faculty member submitted raising a lot of questions. We haven't worked through those. That's what then created the HSPD's light because we just couldn't deal with all that in a timeframe. So like Al said, is we need, people need to get comfortable. They need to be able to understand the concept. And if you need additional time, then, then for any, take that additional time.
You know, that's what I want to avoid is repeat of last time, where the last meeting, the very last meeting before, this was going to get published in a warrant, we get a two-page screed and it blows the whole thing up. And now we're back to square one. So I just want to make sure that we get, that everybody gets their opinion into us. It's time for us to respond.
I'm just also, well, I'm just up so surprised. It was my, even my impression that the fix to the problem, which was the failure of democracy, I may be so odd when, last time, last time meeting, that now we'll just have, the planning board will do their, do their job and submit his own bylaw in this very pedestrian way. Period. Period. And then other things will ensue. That was my impression, but I may be utterly naive.
I think in terms of an orderly process, that would be, that would be the best if this could go into fall town meeting. But again, one of the things I think people felt last year was pushed. You know, they felt that there was, you know, that there were just, things were moving too fast. They didn't understand the answers to a lot of questions. And I just don't, I don't want to get the, I don't want to give people the sense that we're pushing this and that we're ramming it down their throats. We're not, we don't want to, we're not. I personally think this is pretty good. But, you know, we're open to suggestions. We're open to modifications. We're open to discussion. It's like the art, you know, it's very analogous to that, where we roll this out and then over time, people came to us with opinions and suggestions. We rolled those into the bylaw and it came out better.
I mean, we did all this last year, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we did it for a couple of meetings last spring. But, and maybe that's, maybe that's fine. Maybe everybody's comfortable with it. I don't know. We'll find out.
You know, David, he did not vote to approve this. It was not unanimous.
That was on the white version.
But it was not a unanimous approval by the planning board. And that, to me, is a little shaky. I would rather have unanimous. Yeah, don't think I did, but he wasn't comfortable.
I stated it at the time, you can look at the text.
I watch it on, not when I have to go buy.
With the buy.
What?
You can watch it for free. Yeah, you can watch it for free.
There's no audio. I'll try.
Okay. All right, so that's the word on this. It's the same language as last spring. Any suggestions, welcome. Any comments, welcome. Moving on to the proposed bylaw on pre-permitted modification of lots. And Joel, this is, this is what you put together. Actually, was this as a result of a meeting with the zoning board repeals or this cropped up in what connection? I forget exactly.
There was a chair meeting with the board.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
This alteration of the site, these fiscal alterations? I have a question, it's the same as Joel's. I had provided, the discussion we had, provided a company example.
This just says you, if you get the proper permits, you're not, you're not going to be able to clear cut the lot or regrade it in a massive way or anything else.
It's specifically tied to two things. One is site plan approval, or if the site or project doesn't require site plan approval in building permits. Trying to say, it's always good to read and reread and make sure it actually says it, is that unless you have site plan approval or unless you have a building permit, you can't do any site development work such as re-vegetation, excavation, stockpile and fill the grain. So the other way, you need a building permit for a site plan approval before you can do any significant site operation.
Okay, does that mean I have to wait two weeks or after I've altered the site completely, I come before the planning board and then I just wait two weeks? I come before the planning board, and then I just wait two weeks and I get to do what I want to do? I mean, where's the, what happens? If this, does it mean forever? If you alter the lot, then you can't ever come before the planning board and get approval?
No, you can, but going back to that, in that court case a couple of years ago, the planning board will review the site. Site plan issue, the planning board will review the site as to inspect the general growth line, pre-operations. So it could result in the board, as part of site plan review, ordering that there be some site restoration.
Or if it doesn't come under site plan review, the building inspector requiring that.
Yes, yeah.
Where does it say that?
Yeah, that's.
Well, it does speak in two different, two different things.
I'm just trying to see where the teeth is, you know, where, where this bites somebody back. I mean, it's, it's so gentle.
Well, it is that, and then these are good questions. I mean, so the teeth, I suppose, let's walk it through, if somebody violates the bylaw, this gets passed, somebody violates the bylaw. So you ask us to go to court to get injunction, um, or you issue, or the building inspector issues a stop work order and it's observed, and if not, then it's off to court to try to get. I think the language is clear for those purposes, but I think your questions are, um, so what, what are the consequences?
Right, what does, there's no real direction for the planning board? Do we just review it in terms of, well, we're going to make you restore the entire site? We know darn well that will never happen. We'll never really make somebody, because it's impossible.
Well, that's up to you. I mean, we did get clear direction from Land Court.
We do. Do you really think we could do it? I mean, do you, this is where you get people before you, helpless humans, saying, oh, we didn't know by taking out all the trees and, and blasting that we, uh...
That's, but here's the bylaw, it says it.
Right, but they're the helpless humans who are saying ignorance. I think, so, I'm just thinking, remember, was it up on Roland Lane? Where we had, um, some people bought a lot, completely clear cut the entire lot, then decided for whatever reason that they weren't able to build the house. And do you remember the washout?
It was Roland Lane, it was, um, but it was, it was close to it.
Right, off Roland.
The one that takes the dog away.
No, I don't remember it was, but it was on a hill, um, the land, I mean, just the topsoil washed out. It was an absolute disaster.
Hunter?
No, no, that's, uh, this is, this is right off Route Twenty.
No, old problem.
No.
Not that, you're in the whole wrong side of the town.
This is right off Route Twenty.
This is right off the post road.
Okay.
Dean Road, it's not, yes, Dean is the other side.
That's why I was on the other side of town.
No.
Oh, God, all right, I'll find out what it is. It isn't important, but there was a house that, or, that was to be built, and they came before us, but.
Derby.
That's it, Derby.
It's, not Derby, but the one next to Derby.
Parish.
Huh?
Perry?
Perry. That's the one, Perry.
Yep. Anyway, I thought that was probably the worst example of anything that's happened in town. It was naked and empty, not even, uh...
I think that was skating park.
Did that happen down there too?
It was Perry. But they clear cut the whole lot, it was like over two acres.
Yeah, completely gone, twenty-five acres.
And it was a slope.
And it was awful.
And everybody on the downslope side just got washed out for like a couple of years. And there was not a thing anybody could do about it. That's what, that's what this is trying to address.
Right.
That you, you just can't do that.
But where are the, where are the consequences of what I'm...
Are you suggesting that this does address it? And again, where are the consequences? You know, what if someone just does it?
Well...
And they don't go for a building permit?
I'd do it.
Right, well, so the, I mean, the what if is, the... Well, I have two thoughts. I mean, one is, before I answer your question, I mean, one thing we could do is put language in here saying, in the event that, uh, some alterations are made to the site before the proper approvals are secured, the property owner may be liable for restoring the site to prior condition, or something to that effect. As I said, with, and, and it's, it's actually a good question, because the what if is not so clear in the case of a building permit. The case of site plan review is clear, because it comes back before you, and we have the clear ruling from Land Court that you get to go back and go to previous disturbance conditions.
The only thing we have now is fines.
Yeah, which are meaningless.
Which are meaningless, because this town never imposes fines.
Well, it's not just this town, it's the courts. The courts just aren't that interested in imposing three hundred dollar day fines for somebody to disturb trees down off the lot.
So the sentence that you talked about adding to this, that if a property owner goes forward, does all this stuff without proper approval, they may, they will be held liable, or they may be held liable, or shall?
What if, what if you made that property then subject to site plan review? Sounds like a punishment worse than death.
It is.
Absolutely.
Well-known.
Who said that? That's somebody, Oliver back there, gag.
Site plan review or jail, whichever.
No, no.
Or I'm going to be watching the planning board meetings on TV.
But I like that they, they may be liable for restoring it to its previous condition. We don't have a whole lot of TV.
Heck, and restore eighty foot trees.
Right, they're impossible.
You can. Hello, Susan.
Hello.
Get some pretty big ones in, though. Very expensive. And what defines accessory removal? You want to put a swimming pool in?
You need a building permit.
Yeah, go with them, it's fine, but it's got nothing to do with the trees, does it?
Yeah, well, until you get the building permit, it does.
That's, that's one of the thoughts that I had, was as far as whether this also really warrants a definition of site alteration or development, because, you know, of what limit? If someone cuts down five trees because they want to put it in a swing set that doesn't require one, does that address? Is, where are we talking about?
A swing set doesn't require a site plan approval or, or a, or a building permit.
Right, so, so then...
The trigger is the building permit or site plan approval?
The trigger is the removal of material prior to those activities. So how do we know someone isn't just clearing, because, well, I'm putting in a place set, and then just clearing it, and then a couple months later saying, well, I'm now submitting a building permit because I'm putting a shed. It's trying to figure out the activity, the clearing happens first. Trying to figure out, well, what is sort of permissible to occur versus what is really site development? And, you know, if all of a sudden they start taking down twenty-five, thirty percent of the lot, something substantial is going to be happening versus ten percent, or, you know. That, it's that, trying from enforcement's standpoint, we get the calls, there's a lot of trees coming down. What's going on? How do we respond, and where do we draw that line?
Let me just say this too, that, that if, if the, if the resulting construction does involve site plan review by the planning board, we, I, I, I think you need to listen carefully to what Joel Barst has said, because we are mandated by a recent court case to consider the property before anything happened to it. And that includes the eighty-foot trees. Now, maybe we can't plant eighty-foot trees, but maybe, maybe we can't plant ten, eighty-foot trees, but we could plant thirty, twenty-foot trees. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we, that, that, that kind of mitigation is definitely in the cards.
And depending on...
And that, that's if it ever comes from site plan. In other words, if it starts as a small one and then grows, now we have site plan review. And, you know, that, that, that's, that's something that, um, I, I, I don't think it's, it's clear to builders yet that that, that is actually out there.
I think the issue we're going to have, Al, is that families sold their house, and now a new family comes in and wants to build out above the garage.
Somebody has to tell them what the story's going to be.
Do you go back three years later to, oh, I've got to go back to the original topography? That's unfair on the ensuing buyer.
Tell it to the land court.
It's actually happened.
It's actually happened?
Over on Radcliffe?
Beaver.
Beaver, right off Radcliffe. It happened, and that was the court case. Wasn't that wall in the setback still?
It was all outside, in, in the setback, wasn't it?
Wasn't it right on the property line, that wall? It wasn't within the setback.
It wasn't about the wall.
It wasn't about the wall.
Well, it became about the RGFA, but...
It became about everything on the site. We could have made it take it all the way down to the original grade.
It wasn't an innocent purchaser situation, and that is a tougher case that the gentleman raises, but what happened on Beaver Road was not an innocent purchaser situation.
The builder was not innocent.
The people claimed that...
Builder, but the people who bought it.
The people that bought it claimed it was, and they, you know, they, their position was, we're getting beaten up by this, because we had no idea.
So we the deed.
Yeah. I mean...
It was a big mess.
It's not, this isn't coming for us, this is land court.
And we did everything we could in terms of trying to...
We actually, we, we actually, our reaction was, we can't do that.
Right. We said, we can't, we can't ask these people to spend this kind of money to do this. We understand they bought this payment, both they weren't fully apprised of all this. And the neighbor said, no, I just don't agree, and he took it to court, and he won, so.
Well, there was a builder in the middle there, he knew exactly what was going on.
The builder, but he was long gone.
Right, well...
She, she was long gone.
Yeah.
It was in accounting somewhere along the line.
No.
Anyway, so...
So, um, in this case, what, this actually is helpful, because it, in, in some instances, it's going to keep people from running up against this fairly proponing a mandate that we, we'd have to consider.
So why don't I try out language, and you can look at it, but it would be something along these lines at the very end that says, in the event that site, and I think I'll look at, you know, the site alteration development terms play. In the event that site alteration or development occurs, uh, without special permit review or a building permit, property owners may be required to restore the property to its prior condition, or something to that effect.
I, I like that. I'm wondering whether we can add not just property owners, but also contractors, because they're the ones that, you know, do business all the time, know what permits should be required, that they could be jointly and separately liable.
And were there reasons?
Yeah. Or there is.
Um, I was just wondering, was this for the whole state? Did this explain to the whole state that earth couldn't be, that earth be put back? Like, was this land court hearing specific to Weston or for the whole state?
No, it was a, it was a general decision, wasn't it?
Well, it was interpreting the Weston bylaw.
Yeah. Just, just the West, the bylaw, yeah.
And do you know what part of the bylaw led to that proclaiming ruling?
Um, I think it was the site plan language, I believe, it's the language in the site plan bylaw.
Maybe we should modify that so it's not such a proclaiming.
Well, it's a matter of perspective. The people that just stared at the fifty-foot wall probably didn't find it proclaiming. I mean, it just, it really isn't a matter of perspective.
Because of the fifty-foot Beaver, um, when we saw it, they still weren't issuing a final CO, so they were, the project wasn't complete, they were still in process. This year, we had Joel consider, like, is there that land court decision, if certain, say, approvals or permits are issued, like a CO, what is, what is our reach in this? Because that's one of the things, that 144, that was still an open process. They applied for a CO, that's what sort of triggered the appeal of the site plan. So that was the mechanism, that appealed the action by the building inspector. You know, is there a time period by which, if something happens, that it really, this, this view from Land Court does not apply, because it's like the clock starts over, versus, you know, ten years down the road, it's only cleaning up a pool and pool house, then we look back to aerial photos from the eighties and figure out what was there on the site. Because then that would be a benefit to, to sort of work into our regulatory process to provide that definition, so that people are no upfront.
I don't know, it just sounds like we're really getting to specifics at that point. And I think that the language, as this is, is nice and simple, and if we perhaps have the teeth written in as well. Um, we're hoping that this never happens again. I believe that is sort of the whole purpose of this, right? Is that we're hoping that we don't ever deal with this.
Right, and this, by the way, is short-term. I mean, this wouldn't come up, you talk about Beaver Road, because that's where the language came from, but it would be something that crops up three or six or ten years later. I mean, it's something that happens today, or yesterday, a neighborhood, a neighbor comes into town hall and says, gee, all these trees got cleared yesterday, and I wasn't aware that there was, that there were any proposals to do anything to the property, and, you know. So it's a quick response sort of thing. It's not something that comes to light three or four years later.
But one of the, one thing that, I mean, I'll just throw this out, is, what, what I would want to do is encourage people to actually cut all the trees down, you know, um, it, to forestall. You know, let's say somebody wants a piece of property, there's a house on the property he wants to sell, but, but this is in the way of, you know, a, a clear, of, of the, you know, the purchaser having a clear field, literally. So the guy is, then is encouraged to cut down all the trees, because there's no building permit involved. So he's just cutting down trees on his property, which he can do. And then a year, you know, six months, a year later, then he sells the property, he's got a clear line. That's, that, that, um...
Yeah, that's, it's like staging a house. I mean, you're preparing it, you've got the value of your property being optimized.
I just wouldn't want to encourage people to, the object here is to keep people from cutting trees. So, you know, I, I just wouldn't want it to turn a boomerang and to, and turn around and encourage that.
Sorry?
Maybe we could think about language that does that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good point. I mean, there will be occasional property owners that might be by law. I would think that'd be the exception. I mean, in part, this is responsive to complaints that you've heard that are more, they're typically tied in fact to an imminent proposal of a project, and they just start doing all kinds of work, and no permits have been pulled or approved or sought.
Well, this one has, this has language that refers to the undeveloped or vacant lot, and whether the undeveloped and vacant were taken out.
Well, there is, the, the second sentence does refer less, and this limitation also applies to lots with these structures. It's just they're regulated a little differently.
Do you don't think that the stormwater bylaw overlaps this?
Yeah, well, that's...
I mean, if you disturb, what is it, five thousand? If you start disturbing your property, creating water to flow onto somebody's property, we've got the stormwater going on right now, and somebody can come in and say, hey, wait a minute.
I mean, all, all that, all that does is then they submit a grading plan and show their erosion controls, and it doesn't limit, um, you know, if we want to really limit, you could put some sort of disturbance bylaw that says without site plan review, no more than thirty percent of the lot can be cleared or, or, um, you know, developed, or, you know, bulldozed or flattened. The, the stormwater, basically, it's almost like if people do, two days later, they're submitting an application, getting an approval. It doesn't prevent anything. It just makes sure that the downstream impacts of erosion, that, that, that doesn't happen, but it doesn't...
But isn't that what we're trying to help? Because that's the Perry Lane. Isn't that what you're saying, that they cut, they clear cut the lot and all the water went down? So now with the stormwater drainage, if someone clear cuts or the earth bylaw movement? I mean, you guys have so many strict, um, rules that we didn't have about a year and a half ago. I think it protects neighbors at the moment, which is great.
And if that call comes in, we can go right to the stormwater.
The stormwater or the earth by, if they start moving earth around...
You bring a machine on a lot, and you hit that five thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got a lot I'm struggling circle right now. I've got five children under the age of eight, and it hasn't been, nobody's done any tree cutting since the sixties. I've got a tense quarter, it's overgrown, and I'd like to get a bigger yard area out there for my kids. I mean, I've got, I've got a legitimate use, I've got a few little boys that would, you know...
Well, this is all triggered by...
I have a big yard area, but, you know, you know, I've got, I've got an overgrown lot that actually, you know, needs some attention.
It's all triggered by a building permit or, or a site plan review, so...
No, saying not repl, site plan, approval is not required. Take that out.
Then this doesn't, this is meaningless, because I can't get a permit without stormwater. So if the lot's been cut, I have to do all the calculations.
And I just want to add in also that the, the, you know, if we look back history... And I just want to add in also that the, the, you know, if we look back historically to Weston, Weston didn't really even have trees, you know, a hundred, two hundred years ago, I mean, most of them were taken down. So, you know, I think you have to put a timeframe in to understand what we're trying to bring it back to, because it's, the site work and the grading is obviously distinctive of the glacial period, but the trees are not something that's always been there.
Well, no, but in living memory, they're supposed to be, not all.
But no, not in our kind of living memory, no. I mean, we, we remember when there weren't as many trees, and so it's not.
But again, I mean, what the bylaw, you know, I mean, what the bylaws talk about in its, in its preamble, and in some of the specific languages, has to do with maintaining that rural character, whatever rural character.
It was very rural here a hundred years ago.
Right, but let's face it, those were open meadows and farmlands. Right, and this is different when you're filling them with very, very large structures. You're not just cutting trees and creating beautiful pistas and meadows, you're filling them with large structures.
Right, but I think that's why timeframe is so important, because you just go back to whenever time, it's, you know, there was time when there wasn't trees.
Correct, but there weren't any structures there either.
That's not, that's not an absolutely accurate analogy, because, well, in addition to clearing and not clearing, the internal combustion engine has given us the ability to transform the topography in ways that people a hundred years ago never would have dreamed of.
Well, I'm just talking about the trees and the tree, we're talking about tree, I think we were just talking about tree removal, but site grading is different, that's more.
No, but it isn't, it's part of this.
Right, but they are separate things.
Usually you remove the trees before you do the grading.
Yeah.
And then people who live in the town in the last thirty or forty years kind of expect it to look the way it does, which is not so much farmland and meadows, grazing pasture, as, we think, the suburbs, and that's what they expect. So when you're talking about timeframes, yes, you need to maybe look back, most people, maybe you, you know, have been for the last two hundred years.
Well, I, I have the visions of the ancestors.
But a lot of people have moved in the last thirty, forty, or fifty years.
You know, ultimately, we're talking about trying to balance, you know, the natural environment with the built environment, you know, and I don't think we've got anyone clear cutting, you know, lots to build a meadow.
Except for at the school on Boston Post Road, they wanted a meadow there in the wildflowers.
That's right, that's right, that's right. The one example.
So, I mean, it is, it's a balance of those, of the built environment and the natural environment, and what do we want to have around us?
That's the question.
Yeah, I mean, are we exerts, are we suburbs, are we?
All right, well, we'll come back to this one. I have a feeling we're going to get a lot of feedback on it. I mean, I, I know a number of people in, in town that beg for this, I mean, beg for it. They're the ones that are like clearing the trees and regrading the land, so, there's another side to this.
Think about language to this gentleman's comments and a couple of others, to maybe have a little preambulatory phrase, if you will, that says something about first sites for which development is envisioned, or something like that. In other words, leaving out somebody who wants to clear an area that's got fifteen or twenty trees that have grown in the last.
I don't see the concern here, I really don't. I'm reading, I've read it about five times now, and I'm not reading it the same way that I'm hearing. You know, it's referring to no site alteration and development work, removal of vegetation shall be performed on undeveloped or vacant lot, requiring planning board approval. Later on, it then refers to existing structures where the proposed demolition of the house would occur, or at least about a portion of demolition. So I guess I'm just not seeing where they're going.
So if there's no proposed demolition, then we can try, we can try.
Under this one, under this, by the way, this is.
I apologize, I came in late and I was.
You didn't, you don't have.
Trying to keep my mouth shut, because I wasn't, but I felt as if that was where part of the conversation was going. Some of the context and some of the comments were talking about things like that.
I hear you.
Okay. We're running really late. So maybe we could talk about the definitions next time?
Yeah, these, I think we have a few issues.
About, yeah. Very good. Good, well, we'll wrap this up right now, Joel.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.